And I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll begin by asking supervisor Will Learn to meet us in the pledge.
I'd like to be this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Will. Welcome everyone. I'm going to begin by going to our next item of business called to the public. So, anyone out there wishing to talk? Paint your name and title and.
JR Murdock, private citizen.
Come to the podium.
And since we don't have it on the screen, I'll let the speakers know that I'll be keeping a timer on my, on my three minute timer on my device here.
Nice, okay.
JR Murdock, private citizen. Good morning. I am JR Murdock. As you know, I recently ran for public office and had to leave my job of thirty-one years with wildlife services to do so. All but five months of that were spent in Green Lake County. I recently submitted a proposal for consideration of continuing my services to the community as a private citizen. I have experience, knowledge and expertise to provide predator and nuisance animal control. I know the people and there's not a mountain or valley in the county that I've not been to. Today, as you will be discussing your contract with wildlife service, I want to give you something to think about as you consider your decision. I am available anytime to discuss my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out there?
I'm Shorter.
I'm Jean Swannison. I am part-time with the engineering department, worked with the planning zoning quite a bit. Wanted to talk to you a little bit about this discussion of housing crisis. It's a universal discussion. I mean, I'm even hearing it when I'm listening to the BBC. So it is everywhere and being discussed and lots of, lots of notions out there. Now, I have gotten a present. It is from me personally to, to give to you all, share one for you. And it is the Strong Towns take on the situation. One of the things that they kind of look at it, you know, back up a little bit and look at and say, what are some of the base problems? And that is that it has gone from housing as shelter to housing as investment. So the financialization of the housing market, nobody who has a house wants to see the value go down. Those people who are trying to get in can't get in for that very reason. So it makes a real kind of catch twenty-two in that whole thinking. And they have some solutions, which I'll admit, I have not gotten to read yet. I keep giving away my copy of the book before I get all the way through it. But I have looked at the video kind of outline of it and I'll be happy to send that to you also. I have to dig through a little bit by seeing it just the other day. So anyway, here is, here is this. I'll give it to. There are goals to be met, they're housing their point. And so it's everybody's house, but yours in particular, like, and I got one for you too.
Outstanding.
And I got, I got two because I got one to get the second one half price in.
Doesn't mean I'm worth half. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jean. Anyone else?
Good morning. Tony Hines, Public Works Manager. Not here to introduce a new employee, but an employee that we recently promoted to assistant manager for the facilities in the Parks area. JT Mayer. He comes to us with over twenty years of public works knowledge and experience. So we're welcoming him and think he's a great asset to our team.
Well, great. Thank you, JT.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing him in, Tony.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else?
Good morning. My name's Erica Carrasco. I am with the Greenie County Democrats on the treasure. We are here to object the consenting agenda for consideration by our elections director for approval of the appointment of the Democratic Committee men to fill vacancies submitted by our ousted chair Susan Breen. Despite the following the bylaws, open pub, open public meeting laws, we are still unable to have our elections director reflect our change of leadership in our county despite providing our legal minutes. It was explained by the elections director that this change could not be reflected since we did not have the power to vote as PCs or, and only as elected PCs. Under a revised post twenty nineteen amendment to ARS dash sixteen eight dash eight twenty-two subsection E, it explicitly states, a precinct committee man who was nominated pursuant to this section has the same voting rights as an elected precinct committee man at the meeting of our county committee and state committee. It was also expressed to us that our bylaws did not supersede state law. In party bylaws versus state law in hierarchy, a case brought in front of the Arizona Supreme Court, Arizona Democrats versus state party. I mean, uh, state of Arizona. Uh, CB dash fifteen dash zero two four one dash PR Democratic bylaw supersede state law for internal party procedures. This ruling states the political party has a constitutional right to determine their own internal structure free from state interference. We have followed ARS sixteen dash eight twenty-three C and our bylaws focus on cause and due process. Our ADP chairman, Robert Branscombe traveled to Clifton to provide a hearing for, on the matter and ruled in our favor. We are willing to provide the minutes of this hearing and any minutes needed to reflect our actions and votes as the acting executive board of the GCD. We also would like to inform the Board of Supervisors that an independent audit is currently underway and the ADP and ADP treasure are fully aware and support our efforts to reconcile our finances. We fully understand that we have a fiduciary duty to act in the party's best interest. We also understand that we must comply with the FEC Federal Elections Commission rules and mandate strict financial control, record keeping and prohibition of converting funds to personal use. Our understanding is that our elections director cannot audit an internal meeting procedures of political parties and the political parties have the right under the freedom of association to govern their own internal affairs. Specifically dividing, deciding their own leadership structure and handling internal disputes and discipline. We seek to rebuild an inclusive, transparent party that serves our Democratic Party and serves our Democratic constituents with full transparency. We ask for your partnership in ensuring our party's next chapter begins on solid ground and not in the shadow of unresolved issues. Thank you very much. I have a, a handout of what I. I'm sorry, I only have.
If you can provide one to the chairman, one to the clerk, we'll, we'll make a record for the other members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I suggest that we.
Mr. Chairman, there may be others who wish to address this as well.
I'm sorry, there anyone else that would like to address? Call to the public. Okay, here and then I suggested on the consent agenda, I M E, which was just mentioned and by Mrs. Carrasco with the information that she provided. I feel that at this point, as, as the Board of Supervisors, I feel that we tabled this item. Our elections director is not here today. She's in training. We also would like to meet with our county attorney in regards to her information that was just presented. So I've suggested, and so that they don't have to sit here through the whole meeting. We move this I M E of the consent agenda right now for promotion.
Well, I move that we, that we pull agenda item E from the consent agenda and table it until the urban meeting.
I second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think there's wisdom in that. I think it needs to be clear to those who are with the Democratic Party here that this is for the county to review its own internal responsibilities. The county does not want to intrude on, on the Democratic Party's doings. But this would be to allow us to get more, you to get more information on your responsibilities.
Yes.
That understood? Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered.
Gary, I M E has been tabled. If you'll review, peruse all the information provided by this.
Yes, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business. Anyone else out there called to the public? Okay, we'll move into our next item of business, Public Health Service District. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenie County Public Health Service District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following consideration of the of this following item, Consent Agenda.
I move to be approved, the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered. We will now reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Move into our next item of business, the Flood Control District. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenie County Flood Control District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following consideration of this follow-up. I M E, under agenda.
We approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered. We will now reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and we will move into our next item of business. Derek, prepare. Floor is yours.
The question might ask, right, team, are we able to broadcast in the meeting yet, or should we rearrange our agenda and get?
There is a chance I can, but I'm gonna have to get it out of the ladder real quick and plug this into it. Is it a favor?
We can do that or we can take some of these other items out of order. The emergency manager, Tony Hines and David Manus and, and then see if we're ready for broadcasting that. We'll give you a few more minutes.
Okay. Yes, but feel free to do what he needs to do while we're doing this.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Go ahead, mine's all right in here.
The floor is yours.
Literally, and the ceiling.
And stay on the ladder. I fell off of it. Okay, we'll move into our next item of business. Matt Bolinger, Emergency Managers, floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. We received, we received a request from Emergency Fire on May twenty-ninth for an exemption to our emergency fire restrictions we're under only for a firework display on Fourth of July. This is something that we've done in the past. Yeah, talking through the, the different, with the different agencies, it seems like a, a very safe thing to do. Emergency Fire will be, will be right there as, as well as some other agencies.
Okay, I know that just, you know, Emergency Fire puts on the fireworks shows on private property. That's a great thing for the whole, whole county. So with that, I move to be approved with the Emergency Fire Association's request to host the public fireworks show on July fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into our next item of business. Tony Hines, Public Works Managers.
Good morning. Tony Hines, Public Works Manager for Parks. I had gone out for some quotes to get the sprinkler system and the grass put in at the center of the park. We did this, gave them the week before last. We gave them a week to get the quotes in. I only got one quote back and that's what you have with you. So what we're looking for is guidance on how you want to proceed on this. When I did the quotes, I talked to each one of the companies and explained what we wanted with the sprinkler system, the sod. I had them do the sod separate from the a quote separate from the sprinkler system quote, so that we could separate that if we needed to. So at the current one, the only one that responded was Peterson Landscaping. He's, I believe from the Valley. He started here in two thousand twenty-one. And all filled with his first thing that he started in. So he was all happy to, to see this. The other two, Curtis Landscaping, I never heard back from and Koppel Landscaping. I had heard back from yesterday. I was expecting a quote from them, but never heard anything by this morning. So I don't know where they're at.
Anyone have any questions or concerns?
Well, I, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So I think we have two options here. One is obviously accept the bid, bid that we did receive. And you feel that the bid that we did receive matches your vision of.
What we're asking for, yes, yeah.
Because I, you know, going through that protocol, I, I couldn't tell if it was.
Pretty vague.
What we were looking for or not. So anyway, that's, that's a discussion for another day. But I think our option is to accept this quote. Do we feel that it is in line? I think it's, I think it's in line with what our expectation does as far as cost. Or, you know, or under that.
Under that.
Or do we try to, you know, push those others or Curtis or whoever to get another proposal? Give them another week or something and then we bring this back in two weeks and make a decision. I don't know. That's, so that's the question. What's your?
Well, looking at it, it looks like he gave us a a part of his quote was for the irrigation system, right? And then the next was to lay down the sod.
Correct.
Then he gives the option for the grass. I know they're very busy down there in Safford. I don't know two weeks would get us some more proposals or not. But I know the time, certainly the time is of the essence. I believe we have the goal of having this at least started before the monsoon starts. So we're getting close to that. I have concerns too, like Ron, that we don't have other costs to compare it with. But yeah, I don't know if in two weeks we'd have comparisons or with anybody. It may still be one. I would like to go out one more time. Give them another two weeks and if we don't have any other action or anyone speaking up, then, then we go with this sheet here. It's my thoughts.
Well, that. But what's your thought, Tony? I mean.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before Tony. Hearing both of you. I would prefer holding, waiting for just one more week.
I agree.
That's, that's, I, I like to at least give it another try. One week, two weeks.
Well, one week. Before the monsoon.
We would be doing our due diligence of, of asking again and the one week, we say, or our time constraint, which we're working to learn. I mean, most of the rains are going to start when they do. Um, that, that's going to be the fact, the installation also.
And with that one week window, the sooner the better. And maybe reaching out and see if they're gonna, if, if they are gonna submit or not. And if they say we don't have time, well, then we know and, and we can proceed.
Would you prefer to do that special meeting next Tuesday or next Wednesday? What's your preference?
Tuesday.
Tuesday of next week. We can set that and table this till then.
But what's the date on that day?
Next Tuesday.
Twenty-fourth. We do not have a meeting. If, if you'd like a meeting next tomorrow or the next day, but one week would be Tuesday. We, we do a special board meeting. Just consider this item and set it for eight o'clock and, and proceed there. We can get plenty of notice that way. We will need to make sure that those other potential providers provide us something by Friday so that we can meet our publication. Preferably by Thursday, so we meet our publication deadline.
Now, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Tony, so there's the alternative. I mean, there's, there is that alternative for, for seed. Five thousand, well, it's saw saving of thirty-five thousand dollars, right? I mean, the alternative quote for seed is five thousand and the project quote would be sod. Or is it just, is it just five thousand in savings for seed?
No, it would have been five thousand to seed it.
Five thousand to seed it.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand a sod.
Yeah. I mean, I would think that you would still want to apply the starter fertilizer and kind of stuff, you know, the site preparation stuff. I would think you would still want to do that before seeding. But anyway, I think getting sod is the right way to go. So we have kind of the, that the instant gratification of seeing grass there, you know? And not worry about the, the seeds. So.
Hope it's good to have the water as well.
And if we have a monsoon season.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I think we go down that avenue. We say that it's, that we're going to go with sod. We give it another week, reach out to those other bidders.
Yeah.
Give this guy the opportunity as well. Say, hey, look, you wanna start a pencil, whatever. You, you have that time to submit a new proposal. And then we make that decision next week.
Okay. Good.
I'm good. All right. So I'm, I'm gonna move to be table, agenda item six A until the next follow-up. We, we give more time for additional proposals.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it. So, thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our next item of business. David Manus, Public Works Manager. Both managers, so ship on. Okay.
Morning. Name's David Manus, Public Works Road Manager. Today, my discussion items, I have three of them. The first one I want to go over is the purchase of a portable screen for our gravel pit. The screen that we currently have is twenty years old. Been a good machine, you know, it's starting to nickel and dim us to death. And in the last five years, we spent about twenty thousand on it just for repairs and maintenance combined. This year alone, we've probably made four hundred and fifty thousand tons of material. We, or four thousand five hundred and some. Currently, we have two thousand forty tons in the pit. And we've spread close to that out on our roads, roads. Some of the other projects that we've done with the material that's come out of our pit is the Duncan Annex. Since I've been here the sixteen years, we made the material for the old voting building, Duncan Annex. Uh, the fleet shop, mechanic shop, we made the material for that. Search and rescue building, made the material for that. And that's not counting what we've put for chip seal projects in the Duncan area and all that to, to build our road base and whatnot. So, uh, we've got, we went out and looked for some quotes. I have the same problem Tony does is, uh, people just don't respond real quickly. And before you know it, you're a month, two months into it and you still haven't got a bid. Uh, we, we did receive some bids on Friday, a bid on Friday for another machine. Most of the machines that are compatible to the Easy Screen twelve hundred, which is the one that we're asking for. We're, we're seeing that the prices are two hundred, three hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars more than what we're looking for. You know, so, uh, uh, the quotes that I put in front of you, there's, there's two quotes. One of them is for, from Easy Screen Angus Industrial, and this is the same machine. Their original quote was like ninety-eight thousand. And then we found another place, MSLLC, which had the same machine made by Easy Screen, just a different manufacturer. Well, they came in with a lower bid of ninety-one thousand.
David, let me stop. Was it different manufacturer or different vendor?
Yes, different vendor.
Same machine.
Same machine, different vendor.
Yeah, sorry about that. But anyway, when I called up Easy Screen Angus Industrial and let them know, hey, I got another same machine, lower price. They sent us a second quote, came down even further than them. So today I'm asking permission to purpose purchase an Easy Screen twelve hundred XLS portable screen from Easy Screen Argus Industrial Company.
At the price?
And the price is ninety-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And this screen, just keep in mind, it's got a balance out. It'll make three different types of material. So you'll have your AB, you can make three quarter rock plus any of the big stuff that comes out the back end. You know, you could use for drainage or for just, uh, I mean, it's a nice machine. Our mechanics are used to working on the Easy Screen, so. I think it'd be a good machine for the county. Our old one, we want to keep down at the Verden gravel pit in Duncan. And what's nice about our old one is it's easy to transport. You hook it onto a dump truck and you can move it from site to site. And we plan on keeping that one and just kind of taking care of it, you know, babying a little bit, make it last a little bit longer.
And when it's not your primary unit, then, you know, it'll, when it's not your primary unit that's working all the time, it might last a little longer.
Yes, sir.
As a spur. Now, was this a budgeted expense? I didn't, I didn't see that.
This was anticipated. This, this was anticipated, but we were using savings from having frankly no rain this entire year. We got the budgeted uh, capacity to do it.
Okay.
I'm gonna show you very quickly what we got up here. This, this is compatible machine from a different manufacturer. It's green, it's dead orange. Um. There's our quote for brand new three hundred fifteen thousand. Use two eighty five. So, um. It's literally three times the price. So.
And they just go up from there, you mean?
This the one unfortunately only received last, um. Last Friday, but it. It it sort of sets the stage of what what these things run and and, uh. I would echo David's uh, recommendation to. Proceed with with the the vendor and the machine that was quoted.
Yeah, I thought it was funny that that neither one of them spelled Clifton. This one spelled it Clifton. And the other one spelled it Clinton, so.
Shows up New Jersey, we'll know what happened.
It it the quotes look very similar, but they were just both spelled.
Thirteen thousand per month on rental fee, uh.
On the other one, yeah, we're to do that.
Well. You're getting caught promotion.
I have a couple of questions. What you have now is. Going on twenty years old, right? So that's nineteen years old. You've got nineteen years out of it. It looks like you've had forty. Work orders you mentioned. It looks like those are pretty, um, your hours. Pretty. Close between those work orders. You're not getting very many hours out of that between repairs, right?
Remember the hours on it, twenty off?
No, it looks like on your list here, you have your list, so. Between your work orders, there's only three or four hours between each one, so I think it is time to get a new one, but I don't. Um. If you have this other one, it's a spare. I don't know how dependable that will be either.
There's just, there's just so many moving parts with this machine and then you get the the, we have a grizzly. Which is a bigger, uh. What we do is we we dump, we run everything through our grizzly and what that does is it takes the big rock out of the picture. And then we get our fines that come through it and then we put those into our easy screen. And and so so we're we're putting the smaller stuff to help the preventive maintenance side of it. But just the dust and the moving parts and everything, they take a beating.
Yeah, yeah, so. Anyway, it looks like it's time, um, for one, and this this machine is the same as your past machine, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're familiar with it and you don't have to retrain on it or anything. Sounds good. That's all the questions I had.
Okay. Well, they entertain promotion. Why move to be approved, the purchase of the portable screen to use and make. Built a building. Uh, repair material for county roads and other construction pro- projects. Uh, purchasing from easy screen in the amount not to exceed ninety one thousand four hundred and eighty nine dollars for twelve cents.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it so.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
My second discussion item is uh, purchase of forty yard roll off dumpsters for the Loma Linda landfill. I'm asking for three of those and two front end closed dumpsters for the blue. From American made dumpsters and again. The ones that we have currently. Are over twenty years old. Uh, because of the amount of trash and everything, the moisture, the condensation and everything that's in there, they start rusting out around the bottoms and everything. The hinges, you know, we have to take them in our roll off truck, we unload them, we gotta push them around a little bit. And, uh. They're just getting pretty banged up. We've done a lot of welding on them, a lot of maintenance on them to get the doors where the guys can open them and close them without using a loader. Uh, the other thing is on on the ones on the upper blue, those are kind of a special made. Dumpster because they need to pick it up with the forks of their loader. They, so the the community throws their trash in the smaller ones. They come in with their loader, they pick it up and then it kind of dumps into the bigger dumpsters. And then Blue Hills will come and haul off the bigger one for them. And, uh, they need two up there as well. I think I sent you guys three quotes. On those ones. The lowest quote was American made dumpsters. That's the same outfit that Vista Recycling uses. So their dumpsters are. Same style as ours. As well as Vista's. There's been occasions if our roll off truck goes down. Uh, we'll have to call Vista Recycling. And they'll charge us, say by the hour or something to come to go to San's Wash, pick up our dumpster and haul it for us. So it's the same type of dumpster. And on those there, requesting permission to purchase. Three forty yard roll off dumpsters for Loma Linda landfill and two front end closed dumpsters for the blue. From American made dumpsters.
Any more questions or concerns?
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, the total, that's what I was trying to come up with. So we have. Well, fifteen for the. Three dumpsters and then. What's that? Twelve, we call it for. For the two front end clothes. Both from Americans, so.
So a total of what, twenty thousand?
So, yeah, twenty seven thousand.
But the the total for the the three was twenty thousand, three hundred and forty, twenty six cents. And then for the two on the upper blue. The total was eleven thousand eight hundred. And two cents.
Thirty three thousand.
I'm taking.
Yeah.
I entertain promotion.
I like to. Make a motion that we approve, um, the purchase of. Three forty yard roll off dumpsters with Loma Linda landfill. And two front end closed dumpsters. For the blue transfer station, not to exceed thirty three thousand.
I'll say that.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it so.
Alright, thank you.
The only thing I have to add is this from American made dumpsters, yes.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see.
Hey, one more, my third, my third. My third one is. Requesting permission for Diamond J welding to reconstruct the headers box. The heaters box and build a stripping chute at the bottom end of the arena. Uh. We've been remodeling our our fairgrounds a little bit, the arena and all that. Uh. We did the bottom end, we're upgrading the top end right now. As you guys know. We did an extra arena. And, uh. I've been getting so many phone calls to junior, we had over a hundred and twenty, twenty eight, I think it was a hundred and twenty eight kids. Entered up in this last junior rodeo. They were able to get them out of there at eleven o'clock instead of three o'clock in the morning, because they were running both arenas. Not only that, but with the community. The team ropers used to have to wait for the barrel racers, the pole banners and all that. So whoever got there first used the first arena, whoever got there second had to wait, you know, so. It it's just been a win-win situation, I feel for Green Lake County. Uh, not only for us, but the community. Uh. So we're wanting to finish up that project we started. I've I've made several phone calls. A a lot of the people I've talked to. Uh. They wanna build things in a shop. Okay, I ran into a lot of that. They wanna build things in a shop. Or build the panels. Uh. Diamond J, a and and a lot of them that I've talked to too. They they won't even send a quote because I, the only thing I can use, I'm not interested. Because they don't wanna be mobile, come out, drill all the holes, set all the corner posts. Line posts and do the welding. On the ground. They wanna make everything in a shop. Uh, Dylan Jensen from Diamond J, I got two quotes. One from Diamond J. And the other one I sent you guys. Is from High Low. Country LLC. They they're they're not like, uh, they they like to build a lot of top rails, a lot of fencing. They do a lot of work on top of the like rock walls and stuff like that, you know? This really isn't their specialty, the arena stuff. Uh, their bid came in higher. Than Diamond J. So, which is a good thing and. And I think Diamond J. The guy's been around it so much, when you talk to him. When you're talking swing gates and latches and he just knows how everything's supposed to flow in the rodeo business. And, uh. He's kind of passionate now towards. The work that he's doing, you can tell, you know, he just does a fascinating job, so. I'm requesting permission for Diamond J welding to reconstruct the headers box, the heaters box. And build a stripping chute for the team ropers. At the north end of the arena. Also, part of that project is gonna be an alleyway in the middle for the barrel racer. They've been hollering that for that for a very long time.
Mr. Chairman, if I might clarify as well, this is of course one more step in our ongoing, uh, fairgrounds, project renewal and so forth. You will be getting more proposals coming forward. One of the things we want to accomplish eventually. And you'll see it on the second quarters, we want to build. Uh, essentially a barrier that keeps participants on one side and spectators on the other. Um, that will come probably either at our next meeting or the meeting after. Um, that'd be a panel fencing similar to the the ones that the secondary arena is made out of. And create that natural barrier, but for for now, this will. If not complete, nearly complete our upgrades to the primary arena. Uh, it'll it'll shift the the roping chutes closer to the right as you look at it, as you cross the arena. And give a wider alley for barrel racers. Honestly, I knew nothing about this, um. I, what I've learned about rodeo arenas and dirt and rails and the whole nine yards is astounding. I feel like I should have an associate degree. Um, but nevertheless, uh, this is part of that ongoing process, um. All of the companies we've talked to are difficult to schedule. They've got things going on. Um, this one, we will, we originally thought they would begin on Monday, but. We're probably gonna ask them to come in in July and do all of the the upgrades at one time. On the second one, the high country, you'll see there's a second line item there for the the top rail. Remove that from the quote, because that's gonna be considered later and separately, because we're upgrading that rather than just a top rail, we're gonna put panel fencing there. So it reduces that bid down to twenty three thousand, uh, rather than twenty thousand. I think we've got lowest and best, uh, the Dylan Jensen, that provider. Has built most of our upgrades, um, he's familiar with our place and our arena. And I think so he is both the lowest and the best for the arena upgrades that we're talking about.
Okay, anybody, uh, anymore? The questions or concerns, questions, Eric, since since he has already done work, uh. Still on Johnson, already done work, uh, we have this project specifically that we're want to award, there's other. The last thing we want to get done. Is there an opportunity then to? Single source that activity to him, so that when he's here, he can get it all done at one time or or?
That would be our intention. We need to price out the the cost of the panels, but I I believe we can do that, yes.
I just think it makes sense.
If if the board gives direction to go with the same film, have them build it all at one time, then then we can proceed that way.
I think that's, I mean, that makes the most sense to me.
Okay.
If I need costs. Instead of, instead of another trip, you know, I mean, both of wherever he's moving and bringing his equipment, just. Maybe we can find some reduction or find some. Yeah, panels. Yeah.
We plan that direction then.
Oh, better in the motion, good enough direction or?
It is.
Okay.
And he's done work for, so his work's proven out there, right?
Yeah.
And both that, both the jobs he's done for us, he's coming lower than everybody else.
That's. Good track record and a good partner man.
It seems like our arena too, which we're good with.
Good. We want him to, yeah, get it all done and see, I helped do that.
I'm glad you're getting positive feedbacks on it, too.
Yes, sir. He he's he's actually just got his card to be a professional bullfighter. In the pro rodeo circuit, so he fights bulls. Out there when the bull riders get bucked off, he's one of them guys that, you know, gets them. He bursts a bull away from them. My point is, he's been all over the country. He was a saddle block rider, you know, he's just, he he's seen so many arenas and the way they work and what they're supposed to do. What they're not supposed to do, that he just has ideas. He just. It's a good deal for.
If he builds a bed in there, well, no, he actually lives in the arena.
Alright, well, I entertain him for plot, I entertain promotion.
Well, I I approve that we approve, uh. The reconstruction of the roping chute. Arena entrance area and the construction of the stripping chute in the. Primary rodeo arena at the Green County Fairgrounds, awarding to Diamond J welding in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion?
Is, are we going to, um?
I I've got the d- direction already on the other.
Okay, sound good there.
Yes.
Great, you're none. Call for vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it so. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we could, we can do a couple of things now. It appears I can now broadcast or we could deal with the other two items on the agenda. And then talk budgets all at one time, whichever you prefer. I I think Mr. Murdock's here for item number nine. And, uh, our. Our engineer's now in the corner, so however the chairman wishes to proceed, if you'd like to push the budget back and discuss it all at once, we can do that.
Let's, let's do that. Let's proceed down the agenda and. And save the budget stuff for last. Okay?
Very good.
So our next item of business is, uh. Derek Ripier, county. No, I'm sorry, Reed Larson. Sorry, Reed.
Good morning, gentlemen. Slogging along with our public works building. Um. And the first. Item that you have before you is discussion and possible action to purchase engineered fill for the. To go underneath the building. Um, we. Originally got quotes from. T K C in Tri-County. Um, but somewhere along the way, Mr. Manous made the acquaintance of the gentleman that are running the F and F project here in town in Brancy. And they have, uh, sometimes ADOT keeps the millings and sometimes they. Turn the millings over to the contractor to do with as they see fit. In this case, the millings belong to the contractor. And they're willing to sell those millings to us for. Uh, fourteen bucks a ton. And they will truck them to our site, our project site. And even supply a loader to buck the millings up into a pile, um, because they'll lay them out in a belly dump in Windrose. And so we have a, we have a quote from Tri-County for twenty dollars and fifty cents a ton. And that's trucked up from their. Um, facility there in Stafford. So what I'm hoping you'll consider. Would actually be a hybrid. Award here. Where we use the millings as engineered fill at the bottom of this pad. And then we top it off with a foot of A B that we get from Tri-County. The millings are perfectly fine as engineered fill, but they. They do have a couple of small downsides. One is they're they're not screened. So they have chunks of oversized material in them. And they tend to be, uh, a little harder to test for density. And the third thing is. David Manous just doesn't like them.
That's probably the most important part of our.
Most important one right there.
It is passion.
Um, but but what I would hope that you might consider would be. What I call a hybrid award where. You award about seven hundred tons of A B. To Tri-County at the twenty dollar and fifty cent price per ton. And then another approximate two thousand tons of millings to F and F construction. For fourteen bucks a ton. That, that would be my ideal.
Did, uh, C K C not bid?
They did, they were.
They did, they were higher.
For whatever reason, they were quite a bit higher than. By counting. And, uh, just for your situational awareness, we also looked at possibly getting material from our. Eagle Canyon pit, um. There were various reasons that wasn't, uh. Ideal for us at this present time. And we also looked at a materials pit in Duncan. Uh, that had fantastic material in it. Um. But again, there were reasons that it it wouldn't work out for us. But again, there were reasons that it it wouldn't work out for us either primarily trucking.
All right.
So for clarity, you're looking for. Twenty three hundred tons. I'm sorry. Hold on there. Yeah, maybe twenty three hundred tons from F and F. And then the seven hundred tons of A B from.
About two thousand tons from F and F.
Two thousand, okay.
He he put in his quote to you, I believe, three thousand tons, but he was this. They're making ten times that still off of that job, so. I think he's just upselling us a little bit. Which is fine.
And then you're looking on, sorry, Ron.
No, seven hundred, seven hundred tons from.
Try it.
Try it.
Of which Tri County originally proposed twenty four hundred. So you're going to lower that to seventy hundred?
Two seven, yes.
Yeah.
And they try county, I checked with George this morning to make sure his quote was still good because it's been a few weeks since we got that from him. He's been busy with chip seal season. Both in Greenlee County and also down in the flats. That's mostly behind him and he's able to pivot back and. Start making and trucking A B now.
And the cost per ton would be the same whether it was twenty four hundred or seven hundred?
Yeah. He had to think about that, but but yes.
Something over there. Think about it. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we purchase seven hundred tons of A B delivered. From Tri County materials for twenty dollars and fifty cents per ton. And um. Box uh two thousand tons. Uh millings from F and F constructions and fourteen dollars a ton delivered.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, before you adopt, do we want to lock ourselves into a specific quantity or specific price per ton?
Uh, I would prefer neither. I would prefer approximately seven hundred tons from C K C.
I'll be happy to rework that.
Or appro- and approximately two thousand tons from F and F. So. C K C will weigh their material and we can get close to the seven hundred. F and F, it's going to be load counts. Um, because they don't have scales available. So approximate would provide us with a little bit of flexibility.
That that would be a minor concern and I I know that when you dig a hole, you think you know how much going in, it may take more to go in it, so if if. Yeah. My my recommendation would be that we modify that to approximately. Um, so it gives us the flexibility to fill the hole as compacted as we need.
Do I start over with the motion or?
No, just add.
I'd like to add in that we, that it's approximate. Um, two thousand tons at fourteen dollars per ton for the millings and. Uh approximately seven hundred tons of the A dot specific A B C A B delivered. At twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Yes, I said it then.
Motion has been made a second. For the discussion. And now to call for vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it so ordered.
Thank you, gentlemen. And then the part B of that is placement of that material in compacted lifts. And we got the proposals to do that work. From Spencer Construction, who is the contractor that built our detention basin at the airport. Also from diversified earthworks and then from swap construction. And in this case, we're just recommending. We feel that the lowest and best is the lowest. Um. We we uh very, very happy with the quality of swaps work. And would recommend that in this case that the board go with the low bid.
You don't want to go with a hybrid here?
No, sir.
Okay. I entertain for motion.
You're. All right, well, I move, I move that we approve the uh. The construction plus the potential change orders of the interior filled pad for the metal building to serve as the new public works of field facility. Awarded to swaps in the amount not to exceed forty one thousand eight hundred and twenty one dollars eighty six cents as per both.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made a second. It's through the discussion. And now to call for vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it so ordered. Thank you, Reed.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your situational awareness. The first half of the building showed up yesterday from Mueller. We've got another load expected today. Yesterday was lady had a flat tire. Had to wait to get that fixed, so so I helped him unload it in the dark. Got a pretty big splinter in my finger. I felt unloaded, so.
That wasn't from your desk?
No, so for an engineer, I'm sure you can appreciate that's a very significant injury. I'm reporting that to my boss and the H R guy right, right here in public.
We're calling them in the same.
Question before you leave the podium there, off the subject, have you, have you put that new toy to work?
So the toy showed up, bunch of batteries for it showed up, the controller showed up. No battery charger. You you can't even turn the controller on until you get the battery charger. So I feel I got snickered by the guy that stole that tooth. Probably get the battery charger in twenty twenty eight sometime. Bird will be obsolete.
And or maybe it wasn't included in on the price.
No, we clarify.
All right, all right.
I went to drink on the Florida.
Well, that's true.
Eric, just if you forgot, could you issue a pair of gloves so he doesn't hurt?
I I thought instead we'd just call our brand new ambulance out to check them out.
All right. Well, we will now move into our next item of business, Derek Pierre, kind of administrative.
Thank you. Um, on the um uh USDA AFIS. Oh, there's a request to.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Is that you, J R?
Murdock, J R.
You, did you want to speak on this item again?
Okay, okay.
Um, in in uh. Mr. Murdoch, in the call to public, gave you some background information. He did this work for us for years and years and years. Um. We've had non uh a standing contract, a yearly renewable contract with USDA. A fees which stands for the, and J R's going to correct me if I get it wrong, animal plant inspection.
Health, animal plant health inspection.
Help, help inspection service. Um. What it provides to the county is is some level and I and I don't want to oversell this because it's not perfect, but. It provides some level of of animal damage control. Um. It, one aspect is lions, tigers and bears, so to speak, the big stuff. That that uh attack our agricultural community, but there's also a smaller component. That maybe coyotes and skunks and and so forth. The the statute that that facilitates this. Is actually found in the agricultural section of the Arizona State uh statutes. And allows for counties to work with either AFIS uh USDA or with other organizations. Greenlee County, I found out last night, is the last county to be involved in something like this. At one point, Yabapai had had an arrangement and the other counties. I know that Apache County had a similar arrangement, their arrangement, uh, they no longer contribute to any of this kind of work. Uh, for the last several years. Graham County had an agreement up until last year and the fellow, I know J R knows his name, but in Graham County, what's his name?
Sam Derringer.
Sam Derringer uh was offered an early retirement. He took it, so he is now retired. Um, in Graham County, their arrangement was a cost share between USDA, the county and uh a Ranchers Association. It was the the Klondike Benita Rancher Association. I may have that name wrong. But um when he retired, the ranching association. Wanted to continue his services, so they've got together, they pulled their resources in there. They have a contract with Mr. Derringer to provide similar services um to Graham County. Graham County has made a charitable donation to that organization. Uh, but they have substantially cut back on their funding. This contract is up about two thousand, a little over two thousand dollars from last year. Um, we are the primary contributors to this. Uh, USDA covers some of the costs. Um, but we're the primary contributor. The provider right now that USDA is providing is a fellow named uh Sterling Simpson. He lives in Alpine and works um. Greenlee County, those responsibilities all of Greenlee County, but proximity means he spends more time north than south. And and we need to work with him on that because we know that there are incidents that occur in the south part of the county as well. Um. The county could provide this service on its own. The statute is not real clear. It appears. The statute encourages to work with others rather than standing up a program on our own. I think you could reasonably interpret the statute that we could. Um, one of the areas that that this likewise that gives us. Some advantage is the advantage of wolf interaction. And that is uh that. Take the personalities out of it because the the fellow is currently there as a previous wolf and you know, kill inspector and so forth, but even if he weren't there. Um, that relationship with USDA on the wolf program. Has helped us maintain a seat at the table and trying to shape the wolf program and I I'm careful to use the word shape because. We didn't stop it. None of the other counties have stopped it. It's not going to stop. There are movements out there right now that are quite strong at the moment. Um, encouraging executive uh authority to defund and delist the wolf. Um. We've heard analysis from from the eastern counties organization that even if that would occur, it's unlikely to to actually stick on the ground. And so Greenlee County has for well over two decades maintained their seat at the table. We've been able to shape a program. That few others have been able to to do. Um. So part of the the value to the county is likewise is that seat at the table, that additional. Touch point, if you will, with the decision makers on the wolf. Um, if you separate the the animal damage control from the wolf, we can take a different approach. My recommendation is that we continue on with the with the ongoing relationship that we evaluated over time. They say, we're the only county doing this right now. Um. I think there's still value in it, but I think it's something worth reviewing. Uh, I've been in contact with Chris Carrillo, the the manager for this now. Um, I've asked him to provide some statistical data on on the effectiveness of the program. Um, as well as their efforts. Our our contract says that they will attempt to find other, other groups to contribute. Um, our, our local ranching community does not contribute like the the Graham County community does. Um, but I want to check with Chris and say, what efforts are you putting forward to find other contributors? How do we defray the cost? How do we make this more cost effective? Um, but at present, I I think going with the contract relationship that we've had is our best course of action at the moment.
Yeah. And that's question. We've always been contracted. I mean, this is the important service, especially for my district that's worth it, that it's. Work that J R has done over the years and. Uh, but uh, we've always had that contract with USDA.
Correct.
Right, so it's not something that we're contracting personally with.
Correct.
Somebody else. It's the contract should be with USDA.
The current provider, he he could decide to go a different way. USDA could guide, decide to go a different way and they would they would find somebody else. So so that the management of the employee and the and the employment costs are theirs, not ours.
Right.
We've had this contract relationship for. Well over twenty years.
Any other questions?
Oh, you certainly asked how long you've had that contract, so it's been twenty years.
As long as I can remember, and that's going back to my county journey days.
Take it, great. Thanks.
Like the motion. Make a motion that we. Um, enter into the USDA AFIS Wildlife Services Contract Regarding Animal Damage Control. For this will be your twenty six.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made a second. Further discussion. And now to call for vote, I'm favoring signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it so ordered. Thank you, Derek.
Just comment that I, I think this is a valuable, you know. Resource for our ranching community of or. So continue to provide that service. We'll, we'll continue to support it, so.
We will encourage the providers to come further south too, because it it makes a difference down here too, and and we need that presence here.
There may be some options that we probably need to discuss if.
Yep.
If that doesn't.
Materialize.
We can separate it, separate on golf like contract or something. You know, towards the south and so.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Ron on that, that he did discussion.
Yeah.
Good. So I. Derek, we shall move into our next item of business consent agenda. Be sure that when you uh.
We're gonna move.
We can do consent then budget, we can do budget then consent, whichever you prefer to do.
And we'll, we'll get the consent out of the way.
Well, you skipped over the pen.
I did.
I'll cover that as part of my budget.
Okay. We'll skip all around. I mean, not that.
Well, let's just go, let's just go to budget then.
We'll be acting motionally ready.
Yeah. Go ahead and go in, let's go into the budget.
Okay, that'll be fine. I'm glad to do so.
Thank you, Renee, for netting the lights. Uh, Austin is. Otherwise.
Somehow I'm fixing our transmission. It got us off just a little bit. I feel like I need to go up straight in the the picture frame, but I'm glad it's up there, so thank you to to our I T folks.
Look your head.
Right.
It's right, exactly. And those of you who know me well know my head's always tilted a little crooked anyway. Um, I'm not going to cover, I wouldn't cover some of the the budget details. You've been provided the details. We've not uh changed that. Um, and so and certainly at any point, if you have questions about the the intricate details of the budget. What we're going to cover today is the the underlying guiding principles that put this together. Um, some of the reasons why we're going to make a somewhat of a surprise recommendation. Um, I can steal the thunder now, but I'll I'll cover when we get into the presentation, but I'm going to help you understand why we got there and why. The fundamental structures of our budget has improved over the years, why it should provide continued solid balance, our budget structure going forward. The law that governs this is A R S forty two seventeen one oh three. It requires the county adopt a tentative or preliminary budget. And the reason for that is that it gets it out into the community and allows the community to look at this. Um, we are required to publish a summary, which is what we call our Schedule A. Uh, we're also required to put out um copies of the entire official budget forms for the public to consume what they want. Those are at the libraries. They were, they will be on our website and they will be uh here at the board's office. But this process allows the board to say, in fact, requires the board to say, here's what we intend to spend. Public, you have a chance to look it over and when we get ready to adopt the final budget, you can come and comment. Tell us where we got it right or wrong or otherwise. And so we're following state statute in in doing this. It'll support our uh truth and taxation levels of property tax funding. As well as tax rates um and adoption of other policies that support the budget. Um. We have been affected, of course, for several years by the influx of ARPA dollars, ARPA American uh Rescue Plan Act. Which was COVID related uh or COVID sourced funds. Um. Those funds have been spent and as you recall, we spent them on personnel costs. That created a corresponding bubble in the general fund that we've been able to use for special uh capital projects. The other trench of that money is the local uh and local and tribal. Consistency fund. Did I get it right? L A T C F. Uh, that was the second trench of money that was treated very much like pilt funds. In other words, given. On a formula that looked very much like pilt and it was primarily for western counties. Uh, and there are no strings attached to that. There's no time or sunset on that. So we we prioritize the use of ARPA funds. Uh, and then we are now moving to prioritize the use of these other federal funds. Um, again, the budget prioritizes uh several one-time projects that we want to bring to conclusion or near conclusion. Um, and then we'll use the L A T C F and and what I would call the general fund derivatives, which are the the. The transition of the ARPA funds into our general fund. And although there won't be any additional COVID funds per se coming, um. In fact, the administration has officially declared that COVID is over. It's no longer a pandemic. And so that that has changed a lot of funding structures and policies. But we can still leverage those funds that we still have on hand. We are leveraging those with our current capital improvement fund. To be able to not only get things done, but accelerate their their progress. Um. We're looking at projects and and. You'll recall, we took a long time to think through some of these projects, did a lot of interaction with public. We didn't want to get it wrong. Um, as silly as it sounds, at times during this process, our goal. Um, as silly as it sounds, at times during this process, our goal has been not to do the stupid thing. Um. We know we found a a pretty good sweet spot where where these facilities are going in. People are appreciating them. They're putting to good use already. Um, but the idea is we build something of value so that we lower our over our our long-term maintenance costs and we have some for the last decades. We have built into this budget a four hundred thousand dollar unanticipated grant component. Uh, we are working right now on obtaining uh grants through various departments from either United Way or the. Community Partnership Foundation. There are also other grants that are out there. Um. That we will, we've explored and may tap into in the future, but we've got the budget capacity to receive those grants should they come in. For years, this this won't be appreciated by Supervisor Warren as it will be by the other two, but for years and years and years, literally since its inception in nineteen eighty. We've been constrained by an expenditure limitation, having taken care of that. Two years ago, uh, we are now, that's not our constraining concern. Our constraining concern right now is do we have the revenues to support what we're doing and what are our sound? Conservative, and I say conservative in the fiscal sense, we're not spending what we don't have. And and having lived by that principle for years, the county has been disciplined enough. That we are able to maintain consistency and this budget incorporates that. The entire uh general fund fiscal year budget is about one point one five million higher than last year. Uh, that's about a five percent increase over last year general fund spend. Um, on the expense side, that's driven primarily by wage increases. And that's the three percent plus uh market adjustments. We were able to take a very broad view of our market adjustments this year. We hit some areas we didn't anticipate and all of the areas we did anticipate. Additionally is um the uh elected official salary. This is an area that's difficult budget for because the legislature could be kind of fickle on this. It was a sixteen-year gap from the last. Um. Wage increase to the current wage increase. And it's imposed half in one fiscal year and half in the next, but that represents a fairly an outsized jump. On the revenue side, we've been able to uh. Our state shared sales tax revenue, which is our single largest revenue contributor. Uh, has exceeded our projections and actually left us in a stronger cash position than. We had anticipated a year ago. The other aspect of that is structural cost savings, which I'll cover in a second. Um, I want to strongly commend our elected officials. Last year, there were some um. Market adjustments that we wanted to make that had been identified that should have been made, but our budget picture was not as solid. And as a result, our our elected officials, department heads said, we'll wait. That's a family atmosphere about solving problems that is. Unequaled anywhere else in the state. I cannot speak highly enough of our elected officials. They were patient. We've been able to make those adjustments this time and and they were still solid, but I I really want to give a shout out. To those uh elected officials, department heads who waited with us. Um. In this time, I'm going to shout out to Renee again. He's combed through our budget and we found some specific line items. That for a variety of reasons had grown larger than they needed to be. Um, some of that was our our sort of formulaic approach to things. And some of that was that that we had had some higher cost and I I think of one, for example. There was a line item in the sheriff's budget about police equipment. That climbed from, I think it was fifteen thousand three years ago to a hundred thousand last year. And we were trying to match the spend. Um. That has gone away. We've we've toned that back. We've worked directly with the sheriff and his staff. To identify where the money needs to be spent and where we don't need to spend anymore. So. Renee has combed through the budget, found those areas um and reduced them. The other is that that we would typically take our salaries and say, okay, well, there's. There's fifteen people here and the average salary is such and such, and we're going to increase it by five percent or three percent. Renee went through and identified each individual employee. And that has resulted in some cost savings because we are now budgeting for what we actually have as opposed to the general. Placeholder budgeting that we've used in the past. That will need to be done periodically, but at this point, we'd able realize some cost savings by being more accurate in our uh wage forecasting. Our policies would adopted, particularly with respect to vehicles, will give us the ability not only to choose. The best priced vehicle, but also the best best method, which may result in overall cost savings. Or quicker delivery times. For example, we've explored. Um, some options for obtaining police vehicles that would come to us, show up already outfitted. It's a very frustrating thing to get a vehicle and wait three to four months. To get the upfitting scheduled and done. So the purchasing of a police vehicle takes sometimes six to eight months by the time it's on the road. So with the board's change in policy, we can look at every aspect of price availability and ease of of uh acquisition. Wages in FY twenty three, we were in the middle of the of the the end of the pandemic inflation. Uh, inflation nationwide was at eight percent. We took a creative approach that year. We you'll recall. Where everybody got a certain dollar amount raised and and then everybody got a percentage raise. And what this did was it protected our lowest wage earners. They received all just shy of ten percent increase in their wages and at the very top end, it was down to two point eight. So our people who are most vulnerable to inflation shocks. Um, were protected from that inflation, uh hyperinflation at the time. Um, the following year inflation had cooled. It had been actually a little bit higher than three or four percent for much of the year, but it began to cool. In FY twenty four, the board approved a five percent raise. Last year was likewise a five percent across the board raise. Inflation was still hovering in the three to four percent. Over the last eight years, Grimley County has been by far the most aggressive county in trying to keep wages ahead of inflation. And we've been able to do that. Our employees have not lost buying power during the the COVID years and the post-COVID years. Um, when the board gave direction on inflation or excuse me, on wage adjustments for the current fiscal year that we're going to adopt for. Inflation was at two point eight percent. Um. But it was trending down. Uh, as of last Thursday, last Friday, when I looked. Uh, national inflation rate is two point three percent. Arizona's inflation rate is point three percent. Now, the Arizona rate is a little bit harder to interpret. Uh, if you're in the housing market. That will hit you hard. If you're trying to buy uh groceries, furniture, Arizona's inflation rate is nearly flat. But it depends on what you're trying to buy. Um, but nevertheless, we've been able to exceed our inflation rate again and protect our employees from pa- buying power loss. Um. We've been able to make several market adjustments and the markets that Austin looks at are relative to the position. So. Engineers, trying to find engineers in different market than trying to find a a truck driver. Which is different than trying to find an assessor. And so he weighs those market adjustments against relevant markets. Sometimes our competition is up on the hill. Sometimes our competition is uh the neighboring county. And so um. We've been able to make those a broad across the 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 enterprise adjustments. And they are sustainable. We've looked at that and that sustainability is primarily due to uh structural balance. Changes, budget changes, and uh. I I think an upward trend in our our sales tax, shared sales tax. So. Uh, again, this is, this is old news to some of you, but I think it's it's valued to look back and see how decisions that were made three and four years ago. And things we're able to accomplish have made a difference in our cash position today. We are saving over, close to a million dollars, a little bit over a million dollars. Every year since we've made these changes. What does that do? It increases our cash position. It gives us the ballast to weather ups and downs in a in a uh changing economy. Um. Many counties took their unfunded actuarial liability and they they issued bonds. Twenty and sometimes thirty-year bonds and they were very low interest, one, two, two and a half percent, but they're still paying that off. The trouble that has put them in is that now that that fund, the PSPRS fund is healthy. There are a lot of groups coming back in and saying, let's. Sweeten up the benefits. Let's make it more rich. And the counties and cities are trying to say, hey, wait, we're still paying off that debt. We're paying it off at a cheaper rate, but we're still paying it off. Um, we didn't do that. We paid it off with cash. More often, we paid it off with some of our cash and some of uh other people's cash that we had received in in the the second trench of COVID money. Um, since paying down our unfunded liability on our pension, our police pension. We're saving approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year and that will go on for twenty to thirty years. That stacks up over time, but more importantly for our discussion, it creates a structural. Change in the way our budgets are formed. Um. Out of county college tuition, of course, we we were successful in obtaining. A change to legislation. So that it it where our. Responsibility for our community college students mirrors the responsibility of taxpayers in other counties. If our kid chooses to go to Yampai County, we're paying their property tax rate. If our kid chooses to go to Graham County, we're paying their property tax rate. As opposed to an expense-based uh formula that had us in the year that we adopted it, it was one and a half million bucks. So um. We've been able to reduce our costs every year. We're saving approximately four hundred thousand uh. To over a million. It depends on enrollment of how many students and where they choose to go. But we've realized savings of of four hundred to a million dollars every year. Again, if this were simply about patting ourselves on the back, that would be one thing. But in this case, it has created, we've changed the structure of our budget so that our expenses are permanently lower. And our revenues are on are improving. Um. What that means is again, it puts us in a better cash balance position. Um, which this slide says, basically it increases our sustainability. That's why I can say these wages are sustainable. Because we've saved capacity in our budget by way of these structural expense changes. Because I can see the cloud behind ever so, every silver lining, there are things we need to pay attention to and we will continue to do so. As I, we started this discussion a couple of months ago. When I wore my gypsy outfit, trying to see the future when things are volatile is is difficult. The state is grappling with it now. Counties are grappling with it now, and that is. You you literally have a point where there are some very, very rich investors. Who wait for some announcement to come from the federal government. The stock market drops on Monday, recovers by Wednesday and they've made a billion dollars. We don't have the luxury, nor do we have that foresight. Um, but those kinds of market economic and social volatility does create challenges for us. Um. We just had a discussion last week. In our insurance pool, our um health insurance pool. All of our investments by law are in very safe. Uh, investments, for example, they're in treasury bills, treasury bonds. Up until two months ago. They were considered the safest investment in the world. They've been downgraded. They're not the safest anymore. As a result, the interest rate reflects that. That's good if you own them because they're now going to pay you more. It's not so good if you're trying to. Uh, work with budgets and stability in the economy. Um, SRS funding was included, the three hundred thousand was included in our uh in the the big beautiful budget bill. Which of course, if you follow the news, is currently stalled. It's a big, beautiful. Flat town on the side of the road at the moment. Um, and and whether it comes out the wash or not, we don't know it. We've not heard that it's been taken out. But there are some fiscal hawks in the Senate side that are saying. We've got to fix this to stop our our national debt from going up and up and up. Um, employment inflation, interest rates, those are things we commonly try to address. Worries about recession, you can literally again tune in on Wednesday and we're going to have a recession by Thursday morning. No worry. That's difficult to plan for. Copper stability. Copper is is what they call a international. I'm gonna get the name probably wrong. International essential mineral. That gives us some, gives us, gives the copper industry some protections that other things don't have. But copper production is still subject to the same inflationary economic pressures that the rest of the economy is. If you're gonna have to buy tires and oil and hoses for hydraulic equipment, those getting more expensive with inflation. And then, of course, overall instability. It can be anything from immigration to courts to tariffs, you name it. That creates an environment where we need to stay on top of this budget as we go through the year. To make sure that we're okay. We've got cash balances that'll bring us stability. But that doesn't mean we can just go spend um without any care. Um, our shared sales tax revenues are trending upward, our half cents are trending down, well, about flat. So we've kept that projection the same. We've we've slightly increased our shared sales tax revenue projection. Um, and they appear to be stabilizing. I'm going to share something else with you real quick. I usually covered a different point in the budget. You're familiar with this now. This is our um. Our current shared sales tax. Revenues. Good. So uh our latest trench, our latest distribution is five hundred sixty four thousand dollars. Which is ahead of our four hundred twenty five thousand dollars by quite a bit. Um, that has left us in our shared sales tax for the year. At seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars over projection. You'll see that number and the number of the darker green are not the same, and that's because of. The county shared sales tax portion. We're likely to finish slightly below our projection. If if next month's. Uh, distribution comes in at the same level we've been seeing, we'll end up thirty two thousand dollars short. We would have to receive a hundred and forty five, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in order to hit our projections. Now, the upside is this brings in roughly one point four million a year. Our shared sales tax from the state brings in uh about five and a half. So. That is why the seven hundred and seventy is higher than our overall uh. Over projection amount. Um. We we should hit. Probably the neighborhood of five point seven. Uh, for fiscal year twenty five. We won't know that until July. Uh, about the time, just a little bit before we're adopting our final budget. Um. Having said that, our trends look good. Um. This is our trends, like I say, over the last several months. It appears to be stabilizing and stabilizing north of what we've projected. We've been, we've taken again a conservative approach to our revenue projection. So that again, we live by the principle, we don't spend what we don't have. Um. Let's see if we got it going here. Legislature. I don't know if you follow the news lately, but on Thursday evening. Wednesday evening, the House passed a set of budgets. It was a Republican-only. Highly influenced by the Freedom Caucus. They have things in there that that are clearly um a very conservative priorities. It was not negotiated so that the Senate Republicans, Senate Democrats, the House Democrats and the governor's office. Have all been involved in budget negotiations. Um. The House Republicans didn't join in that party, so they passed their own budget. And there was the most unusual thing I've seen in a long time. That is Senator Kavanaugh, who is the Senate Appropriations Chair. Very conservative. Actually said, I don't know why those guys didn't want to play. I don't know what they they pass some stuff that is. Expensive, raises taxes and is unconstitutional. That's high criticism from a guy who's generally considered to be their friend. Um. They're negotiating now, uh but the Senate only dropped their budget bills last night. We just got an analysis of what's in the Senate bills. And there's nothing that really affects Grimley County with one exception. That is that the bills. Currently contain an adjustment, upward adjustment in contributions from the state. To the county to help us cover the cost of increased justice of these salaries. Due to the increased cost of uh the spirit or judge salary. So right now, it's it's pretty much neutral, a slight positive on the JP salary, but nothing that that. Has been identified that really hurt us. Um. Some of the middle and larger counties got some specific um distributions. Uh, but but by and large, um, it's been, it should not hurt us. Um, again, we've talked about elected official salaries. One of the challenges, those only get passed at a minimum of four years, uh so it's four years at a time. Um, but. They tend to go longer than that. They tend to try and make up for. Four, eight, twelve years all at one time, which causes a huge bump in salaries. Once every four, eight or twelve years, or in this case sixteen years. And that is, actually has a measurable uh impact on our overall bottom line. But it will stabilize because those won't change for at least three years. But it will stabilize because those won't change for at least three years. Our general fund um will be twenty two million. That includes, like I say, nearly two and a half million, uh little, yeah, around two and a half million of of federally sourced funds that we're still using. Uh it's increased about five and a half percent um over last year's budget. There's, here's your surprise. We've looked at this and based on our cash position, we've we've analyzed and overanalyzed and overanalyzed again. Our cash position is strong. We are recommending that we do not increase our primary property tax rate over last year. Um we could go higher than this, uh up to the TNT rate. But because of our our structural balance and and structural of the budget, structure of the budget, um we're recommended we hold that tax rate at at point eight oh three six. This is in spite of our net uh assessed valuation, our NIV dropping by about ten million dollars. Our overall total budget reflects a larger increase of about eleven percent. There's two, a couple of reasons for that. One is we have booked a a million dollars of, well, one point two million dollars of our reserve funds out of the landfill operations that allow us to dig a new C and D hole. We've booked some other funds across several of the the, particularly in the Sheriff's County Attorney's Office and other areas where there are excess funds. We've booked those to allow some flexibility. They're special revenue funds, not general funds, so they're not hitting our taxpayers. But they'll, they will allow those agencies and those departments to spend what they need to. It's unlikely they will spend them all. But we've booked more of that money than we typically do. Secondary property taxes, this is where our tax rate gets a little wonky. So we've, we've, our our TNT rate for the Public Health Services District is two point six or seven, but by law, we can only tax point two five. And so we've maxed that out. We have ongoing expenses with the ambulance service. We have uh booked money to be able to pay for the ambulance, which we hope we'll see in a week or two. Uh Tony's been invited out to California to inspect it. Um we hope that's a good thing. But we don't want to lower that rate because we need about every dollar we we can to pay for our, primarily our ambulance service. Interestingly, I got a call again yesterday. I get this call about every six months to a year, but I got a call again yesterday from our friends in Graham County wanting to know how we run an ambulance service. And I start that conversation every year with the county's made it a priority to having an ambulance service, and we know going into it that we're gonna lose money. That's, that's a service that this board has always decided is an important enough service that we will, we will pay for it with this taxing district. The flood control district is up the highest, obviously, it, the tax rate goes up. And so when you look at those combined tax rate, it it raises it. Um we looked at this and and felt we could go up as high as uh two point six eight, I think it was. We kept it at two point four. This is a different tax base, however. And it only raises our taxes by that fairly big jump, by only fourteen hundred dollars on the overall levy. So the tax base is smaller. We don't raise as much. We try to keep it as high as we can without increasing the overall tax burden. Because we stockpile this money for when we have disasters, we're waiting for reimbursements from either the state emergency manager or federal. As you'll recall, within the last couple of weeks, the uh FEMA has has come under uh uh under scrutiny by the the executive branch again, uh questioning whether it's it's efficacious to have um FEMA and there's several programs, uh National Flood Insurance, emergency response, emergency funding that they're looking at cutting. I think I've covered all this, the the levy, the one hundred and thirty nine thousand, one eighty five is about two thousand dollars more. Well, fourteen hundred dollars more uh than last year, so it's not very much, uh but allows us to continue to stockpile that, those funds. Because of our our strengthening position on shared sales tax and our cash uh position, we feel we can confidently recommend no increase in our primary sales tax revenue. So our our primary, not primary sales tax, primary property tax, our property tax level levy will be about a hundred and, what was a hundred and fifty thousand less than last year? I'll pull that up and we'll look at it, but we can sustain our budget unless property tax money. It's always good, yes. By reducing the flood control down from twenty seven to twenty four, our combined rate will be um one point two nine three six uh or about three point eight three percent increase uh over last year. We understand this concept better than any other county because of our our near single taxpayer um dynamic. But because our NIV went down, our tax rate's gonna go up. We've been able to hold that down quite a bit. More importantly, our levy will be uh less than last year. And our levy is how much money we collect. Uh we talk about tax rates, we talk about net assessed value, but in the end, the laws govern how much we can, money we can raise. None of our primary or secondary taxes uh exceed the TNT level, so it will not require a special publication or special meeting uh on that. Historically, uh this is our our net assessed value. Make sure I didn't skip one, nope. Uh you'll see that we've lost about ten, ten million dollars in our net assessed value. Our tax base shrunk, if you will. Um nevertheless, we're gonna keep our tax rate the same at at eight oh three six, unless you'd like us to increase it. But we can, we can balance our budget and be sustainable at that lower rate. Our combined tax rate is is up um about four cents over last year uh as a combined. And I'll show you when we talk, look at our budget documents, that that is deceptive somewhat in where the levies fall. Um I I'm gonna not cover that, I'm gonna just zoom through this real quick. You receive copies, as we've talked about, we've made minor adjustments to the, to the list. But our capital improvement plan allows us to stockpile money to cover capital improvements. Um if we adopt a five-year rolling uh capital improvement plan, uh we moved about three years ago to a tiered system where we identify what we want to try and accomplish this year. What we're planning for the next two to three years and the the third would be what we try and uh is more aspirational. Capital improvement expects a a lifetime of at least five years. And generally speaking, a hundred thousand, we we have some capital things that are slightly under that. And there's a list of things that that it generally speaking includes. Again, this, this facilitates long-term policy development and long-term planning. So we don't just go out and knee-jerk and decide, let's build a public works building because we decide we want one on Thursday and we'll build it on Monday. It allows us and forces us as an entity to think these things through. Um and allows the plan regardless of the ups and downs of the economy. There's a assigned priority system, which you're familiar with, tier one of those we intend to get done or substantially done in the current year. Tier two, those we're planning for in the next year to two, we've added a project to that list. And tier three are are multi-year planning or more aspirational. We don't want to forget them. But they're not likely to have a lot of progress in the current uh year, fiscal year. Apparently, there's a blank there. These are included in your packet. I don't know why the 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 uh charts did not make it to my my PowerPoint. They were there this morning. But like I say, they are available and anyone, we provide a list of them. They identify the source, the projected uh cost, source of funding, which department is primarily responsible, which is secondarily responsible. Um and then uh we will review periodically how we're doing on that. With our big projects, our public work building, our Loma Linda Park, our Fairgrounds project, we are meeting typically once a week, or once every other week. Um and we'll be getting, meeting again tomorrow to see where we're at on that. We have an unassigned fund balance policy. One in a, in a very simple sense might call this our rainy day fund. It doesn't act exactly like a rainy day fund because this is not included in our overall budget. This is money we set aside and we have to meet certain very clearly defined uh criteria in order to be able to tap into this money. It's truly there to help us through when things go south and go south badly. Um it represents about twenty-two and a half percent of our overall budget, which would buy us about three months worth of time if this were our only source uh to pay bills with. It's not. This is intended, if things go really south, to get us through to a budget override or get us to uh another budget fix that we would need to employ as we go along. It basically requires us to review expenditures and revenues. If our revenues dip, our state shared sales tax, our main revenue producer dips below four hundred thousand dollars. We then start looking at not filling vacant positions before we start eliminating positions. We look at spending we don't have to do, like discretionary spending, and we cut that out. We look at how we can curtail spending. We look at if if there are uh contracts that could be either modified or eliminated if we needed to. Um but there's triggers that go along with this. So if we hit four hundred thousand two months in a row, we're doing some other things. We're gonna be coming to the board with a projected plan to reduce our spending. And all of this has to take place before we tap into the unassigned fund balance. Um it's not part of the regular budget, and it forces us, like I say, or allows us to be able to taper into another major budget um tool if we ever need to get there. We've used this in the past. Back um a little over twenty years ago, we'd done a budget override. And we were contemplating a second one, and that's when this principle came up. And we've had this uh un-unassigned fund balance policy, which was approved by the Auditor General specifically for this purpose. Our um PRS are, this is our public safety retirement system for our police officers. There will always be a certain amount of unfunded liability here because of market fluctuations. It can change, even if, for example, if we have a a one or two-year officer leave us and we replace him with a fifteen, twenty-year officer, our unfunded liability will go up because that officer's gonna be closer to retirement and has less time to make up the gap. So that will change um every year. We, and I'll cover how the progress we've made, our, the ARC or the um annual required contribution is a combination of what we have to put away today for our officers to retire at the end of their term. And what we have got paid up to now. So it's a combination of unfunded and current obligation. We will, like I say, every year have a certain amount of unfunded liability contribution. Um our current liability is six hundred eighty-one, down from one point nine two years ago. Um which we would pay off the majority of it with with cash again. Um that six hundred eighty-one thousand dollars is up of almost double where it was last year. But interestingly, it has only minimally affected our our funding uh rate. The PSPRS program adjusts our contribution rate every year to to amateurize that unfunded liability over a twenty to thirty-year period, which is why we adopt an unfunded liability uh plan each year. Again, we will evaluate our cash position. One of the the goals, I can't believe that wasn't stimulating enough to keep them here. Um one of our goals has been to monitor this, and if our, if our unfunded liability gets large again, that we paid off before it's huge. And so we keep that at a, at a funding level that is sustainable. Our current contribution to the unfunded liability for the current fiscal year will be fifty-six thousand dollars. Um and that will be amateurized so that we will be able to meet our obligations to our, our uh like I say, certified law enforcement personnel. When we began this program, our funded status was fifty-nine percent. Uh that was just uh three years ago. Um through payoffs in twenty-three and twenty-four, we raised to ninety-six point seven last year. And then it's dropped primarily due to market fluctuations, down to about ninety-four percent. Understand that that ninety-four percent reflects its funding as of June thirtieth last year. So so that funding status is about a year old, and they only go through this exercise once a year, and they set rates based on that. The industry standard for minimum funding for a pension fund is eighty percent, so we are well above that. Um and I expect that our, provided the market does not crash, um I think our funding status will continue to improve year over year. By the way, they use some tools in their actuarial modeling, uh primarily what they call a smoothing uh process, so that even with ups and downs and fluctuations, it smoothes it over time so that actuarially they're not in panic mode with their hair on fire every year, uh and that levels out our payments as well. Overwhelming our contribution will cover our current obligations. Um and there'll be small amounts contributing to our unfunded liability based on market adjustments, changes in personnel and so forth. Um one of the things we want to guard against is there's a lot of push now, this, this overall fund is healthy, very healthy. Um some of the law enforcement unions and some other interested groups are looking to sweeten their their benefits. Those aren't funded. So we've pushed back, saying you can't get what you didn't pay for, and you pay for these things twenty years in advance. We will save approximately two point seven million dollars over the course of our, by having paid off our debt with cash. That would be um based on roughly two million dollar, you know, principal amount that we paid off. Why do we cover this every year? Because this, this one is something we have to stay on top of. And two, it's changed our budgeting abilities. We're not paying out as much in in debt. We're not paying a credit, high-interest credit card all the time. Um our our funding policy will look almost exactly the same if, as we adopt every year. Um but our actual contributions, the unfunded portion will be much smaller than they have been in past years. But essentially, we amateurize what little we have over a twenty-year period. Any questions on that? I know that that we've covered that a lot over the last few years, uh but it's still a bit of a complex thing. I'm gonna switch and cover a couple of our our um schedules. Let me pull this up real quick. These are from our official county um forums. This is what we call Schedule A. This is the summary of expenditures and revenues. Uh last year, you'll see we were twenty million, uh not quite twenty-one million. This year, we're just a hair over twenty-two million. Most importantly, those two yellow figures balance. Yeah, I, amen, amen to that. He has been literally down to the weeds of of our budget. This summary fee is supported by probably just shy of three hundred separate funds. Um some have balances as low as double digits, like eighty-nine dollars. Some are as high as uh five and a half, almost six million dollars. But um and it's probably in excess of ten thousand different numbers, budget numbers that support this balance. So to say thank you to Renee is not nearly enough. If you like flowers, I'd probably buy him some. But we are in balance. Schedule B, and this is where I'd like to emphasize, our primary property tax rate, we're gonna hold the same. That generates about three point seven million dollars. That's down a hundred thousand, not quite a hundred thousand dollars from last year's levy. Levy means what do we actually collect? What do we bring in? You'll notice our tax rates on the secondary at twenty-five percent, or excuse me, point two five and point two four. This is a dramatic dr- jump in the tax rate. And so we look at our combining, we say, well, that's how I would like it to be. But it only generates a hundred and forty thousand dollars, so about two thousand dollars more, not quite two thousand dollars more than it did last year. You'll notice in our flood or our prime public health, we're actually down by about twenty thousand dollars. We would go higher if the law allowed us to, simply because we're supporting that ambulance service. So when you look at the overall levy, and there's how much we're collecting as a combined tax rate, we're down about a hundred thousand dollars from last year, what we were collecting property taxes. What does that mean? That despite tax rates, our taxpayers are actually gonna pay less on their property tax bill this year than last year. Um I'll cover these real quickly. Schedule C is our, the sources of our revenue. We separated into general fund revenues, which are the top half, and special fund revenues. Special funds are literally funds that can only be used for that purpose. I can't, for example, take road fund two twenty-two or two twenty and spend it on a copy and machine for the board's office. And so each of these have a stated purpose. There's revenue that go to it and expenses are charged just to that. Our expense sheet is Schedule E, which is hiding over there. Again, broken down into general fund expenses versus special revenue funds. Um there's, again, we get revenue. Um, there's, again, we get revenue to do certain things, we spend it out. We have a fund, for example, for police safety vests. We can only buy police safety vests with that. Um, there are jail funds that cannot be used for any other than for running a jail. Schedule Z D is where we make adjustments between funds. So, for example, we receive uh a a contribution from FMI to stabilize our funds. We move that from that fund where we receive it and we put it into the general fund, and that's where we were able to increase. Our four million to five million dollar stability fund. That becomes what happens if if everything goes wrong fund. And that that ballast, that consistency has allowed us to stabilize the budget over time. Um, we make contributions from our general services to our health services. We are required by law to maintain our funding that was existing at the time we formed the Public Health Services District. That's a three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars shift from the general fund into the Public Health Service District. We also ship some money from our general fund into the road fund. So with those, all of our shifts from one fund to another are reflected on Schedule D. Schedule F. Is a sort of reshuffling of the deck. This was pa- uh at the behest of the Arizona Tax Research Association. They wanted to know how much of money was available to each of the different departments and elected officials. So we reshuffled the deck, all of the funds for the attorney are listed here, all the funds for the board, and they're separated out one by one as we go go along. Schedule G is another reshuffling of the same information. It's not new information. It, again, at the at the request of ATRA, they want us to say, how many positions are we funding? And you'll see here that we have ninety-eight positions funded in the general fund, fifty-three in special revenues. Which leaves us with about a hundred and fifty-ish positions funded in this budget. Um. The budget doesn't include all of the um the priorities that you had suggested as as Renee covered in our last meeting. Um. And and is balanced both structurally as as well as um sustainably. What happens next is we will ask the board to adopt, uh I've given you a suggested motion, uh but I'll, we'll ask you to adopt uh the tentative budget. Um. Once that is adopted, adjustments could be made down. You could decrease your budget or you could shift money within the budget, but you cannot go above what you publish to the public. We will then provide it to the paper um to publish at least two weeks. Part of the reason we've set our schedule the way we do is because publishing dates have changed on us sometimes with short notice. And this will give us plenty of time to get that in the paper. We will also provide copies of the overall, all official schedules to the public at the libraries, as well as our office and online. And then uh we'll set for final adoption of the budget on July twenty-second. We then adopt tax rates uh on August sixth, I believe it is this year. Um, so it's a little bit of a of a separated process, but it's intended to be intentional. It's intended to be deliberative, and it's intended to give the public a chance to come in and say. We think you're doing good. We think you're doing rotten. Change this, change that, whatever. Um, with that, uh I'll stand for any questions you may have. Um. But that's the budget.
Thank you, Derek. Anybody have any questions, concerns? I appreciate the review. I appreciate the ability to. Hold the primary tax rate. That's a good.
I appreciate the effort.
I appreciate the outcome. All right. So. Uh, entertain for motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the tentative fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which includes the public health. Services and the flood control district.
I'll say that.
Did you include all of the other information in the paragraph I suggested? Because we need to give a number. Did did I give you a suggested motion in your packet?
Yes, that's, that was the motion that was suggested in that last slide. Um, maybe I missed.
Let me. Pull up. Just a second.
I didn't see any numerical amounts.
All right.
Well, it might be his, though. Oh, yeah, he's like, uh, when he sent us some email.
Oh.
So there's nothing in the motion that you didn't just see, but the motion is needs to encompass the numbers in the suggested motion I provided you. If you got it.
Beat your bosom. Yes, please.
I moved to adopt the fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Greeley County tentative budget to the general fund amount of twenty-two million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine. And the total budget in the amount of forty-one million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven eighty-nine. This motion includes the budgets for the flood, flood control district in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine thirty-one. The Public Health Service District budget in the amount of two million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight. The unassigned fund balance policy and the public safety personnel retirement system pension. Funding policy and the capital improvement plan, which may be amended by assigning. Uh, projects to various priority tiers at the time of the final budget. A public hearing to take comments from the public regarding the showing budget will be held on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I second that motion. What was the little bit, David?
Motion has been made a second. Is there any further discussion? All for vote, all in favors, signifies by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, so have it, so, thank you, Derek.
That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey. With the board information, I covered the calendar real quick.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, with June, uh, June and July are somewhat dead months for a lot of our associations because usually by now the legislature has gone home. They haven't. Uh, but we do not have any other CSA related meetings uh this month. Uh, we currently have an ECO um. Zoom meeting scheduled, I believe it is next. Or maybe it's this Thursday, and I will confirm that. Let let you know Chairman Gomez. Um. Moving into July, we, of course, will have the office closed on July third. In observance of the Fourth of July, we'll have our first board meeting on July first. Um, and our second meeting on uh July twenty-second, where we will adopt, uh where the board will adopt its final budget. I understand Rancy's school starts following day on the twenty-third of July. Um. And there will not be any county managers or CSA meetings uh like an ECO meeting as well. There's some things happening both on the Wolf front as well as some other issues. Uh, with federal funding with respect to wildfire that may necessitate an ECO meeting, but that'll be called when necessary. Uh, there's some change. There was a uh executive order issued last week. That calls on all of the agencies that have anything to do with wildland fire. Uh, Department of Agriculture, Department of Interior, Department of um. The O N uh Office of Budget Management, there's one other one. They're all supposed to work together, develop new regulations. So we can better suppress and stop wildfires from happening. Moving into August, um. And, you know, before I forget, right on the calendar right now, we will have an emergency or an off-schedule meeting next Tuesday at eight o'clock. As directed by the board on the twenty-ninth of June to consider uh Loma Linda Ballpark.
Be the twenty-four.
Twenty-four. That's because they were in July. Let's try the twenty-fourth.
That will be potentially the only subject covered in that.
Yes.
Does it have to be?
You can set it whenever you want.
Can I can make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
After I get back, I mean, I'll I'll look at my calendar, but then we'll talk about that.
Yes, all we, you know, if if you're giving it, if you've given us the direction to set it on the twenty-fourth. The exact time we can set, as long as we give it twenty-four hours' notice to to the public and members of the board.
Okay.
Yes. We can do it at midnight if you like. None of us are being here, but we can do it.
Got it.
Thank you. Moving into August, uh like I say, our first board meeting will be on, uh, we have a special board meeting on the fourth. Uh, where CSA will cover the legislative session with this. We'll adopt tax rates at our regular board meeting on August sixth. Um, and I understand Duckman School starts that day. There's also a rural. Policy forum that begins on the the sixth through the uh eighth. Um, and I understand it'll be held in Grand County this year in and around the college. Is that right, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and and Chairman Gomez has been going to that for several years. It's an excellent uh forum.
Old policy.
Old policy forum. It's a group that's specifically looking out for rural Arizona. On the eighth, we'll hold the county manager's meeting. Um, we'll actually begin meetings on that on the seventh and finish on the eighth. Um, again, there will be no CSA meetings that week or that month in August. I would remind you again, if we have any uh legislative policy priorities, we need to develop those fairly quickly. If you have an idea, let me know. We can work on developing the idea. Those need to be in by August eighth at the latest, but we would like them in before then if we have some ideas that we want to pursue. Um, we'll have a a board meeting at uh. On the, we have this scheduled for the the twentieth, and we don't have any reason. We have proposed that we move our regular meeting back to the nineteenth. We um, we set that, and I think what we did is we simply typoed. Uh, we saw that the sixth was our meeting. We put it two weeks later on a Wednesday again, but we normally meet on Tuesday. So unless unless we can rediscover why we did that, we're going to suggest we move that back to the nineteenth. Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that covers our calendar through August. If there's anything else we need to add to it.
I don't know if you mentioned it, but the ECO annual meeting is July eighth and ninth. Just got word from Scott yesterday.
I saw that. I didn't see the date. Is July eighth and ninth?
Yeah.
Okay. I did not have that listed, but I will include that.
That's the annual.
Annual.
It's it's. Um. A planning retreat, strategical planning retreat, where the board of ECO decides where we want to focus our efforts and so forth. And. While that is primarily a um ECO board, any of you are allowed to attend that and encouraged to attend that if you'd like. That is held up and up and up. Are you going to hold the the Ta Wiwi Lodge or whatever it is again, I believe?
It is. What's that? Yeah.
Okay.
And and if you do plan to attend, you better get a hold of Scott because he's.
He's making reservations already. And and uh and we'll also notice that as a as a a public information notice if you decide to go. Just let me know if you'd like to attend.
I will be there. Yeah, we'd say, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I was shooting for the two days in June, but the majority was voted for July.
And that's all we have on the calendar.
Okay. Very much. But then. We've done the calendar and. There, okay. Uh, I, we'll move into our next item of business, the consent agenda.
Well. Noting that agenda item or agenda item E has been already removed at table. I will. I if I have moved to approve the rest of the consent agenda. I second that motion.
Motion had to wait a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The seven sword. Okay, now move into our next item of the secret rise of importance. Gentlemen, anyone?
I don't have any. I don't have any, any, no.
I don't either. Okay, so that concludes all our agenda items and uh. This meeting is adjourned.
All right.
As Chairman, I'll get the things you need to sign uh as best I can. I'll get them gathered.
Uh, there are all the paps.
Are they? Excellent.